April the first, 2025. At this time, I'm gonna lead us in a word of prayer, followed by the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Harris. You want to join me in prayer? I have my father, we just thank you. We thank you for so many blessings. We thank you for this time of the year, when the spring is here and the flowers are blooming. And Lord, we even thank you for the pollen sometimes. I know there's a reason for that. We just thank you for blessing this county. Thank you for our staff, our team members, the excellent job they do and their dedication to the residents of Montgomery County. Thank you for this commission, that we work together, that we care about each other, and that we try to do everything that's in the best interest of everybody in Montgomery County. Do this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Vice Chairman Moore Ziegler. Commissioner Costanza. Commissioner Sankey.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We do have a call.
Uh, we do have a presentation. Uh, Isaiah, have you got that?
Yes, sir.
You wanna do the presentation?
Yeah, I can, I can.
Presentation of Rivers of Alabama Day. Is the group here?
Good morning to each of you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to present this proclamation. Y'all come on up, uh, and I'll let you all introduce yourselves. Uh, I had an opportunity to go down to Fair Hope this past weekend to the water rally. I met some wonderful, wonderful people there, engaged in making sure that we preserve the environment. They appreciate the waters that exist in the state of Alabama for recreation and other purposes. They're concerned about the air and the land and preserving that for future generations. So before I read the proclamation, I'll let them introduce themselves. Uh, and I'm just still impressed with, uh, I think it was the largest water rally that we've had, uh, and just all the beautiful people who are concerned about water and preserving, uh, and keeping it clean for recreation and, and other uses.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Sankey and the rest of the commission for this, um, Rivers of Alabama Day proclamation. This is very exciting to us. Uh, Alabama's rivers are the most biodiverse in the, the country, and we have one hundred and thirty-two thousand miles of them, and you have the very beautiful Alabama River right here in Montgomery. So we're very excited to be celebrating this day with you. And, um, we also, um, thank you for mentioning the water rally. Keep, uh, your eyes open. We're gonna have our Alabama Water Rally Conference here in Montgomery next March, so we're looking forward to that. And we're stepping up our presence here in Montgomery. We really wanna build more, uh, engagement around the river, so please stay tuned to things that you can hear about that. And that will be a lot of things from the Friends of the Alabama River, so I'll let Kathleen introduce herself.
Thanks, Cindy. Thank you, Commissioner Sankey and the entire commission for this proclamation. Uh, Montgomery County is the first county in Alabama with such a proclamation. Uh, I call Montgomery my home, and I'm very proud that this is the first county that we've recruited, uh, that stepped up, uh, to proclaim April eighth, Rivers of Alabama Day. Uh, I'm Kathleen Kirkpatrick. I represent Friends of the Alabama River. Uh, we're a brand-new organization that's working in close partnership with the Alabama Rivers Alliance to get more people out on the river and appreciating our river. Uh, we do have an event coming up next week. I've got invitations for everyone to attend our celebration next Tuesday evening at Red Bluff, uh, overlooking the beautiful Alabama River. And there's an opportunity to take a quick river cruise, too, to entice you to come out and join us. Thanks so much.
So I will read the proclamation in its entirety because it's not that long, and this is Montgomery County Commission proclamation, whereas the Rivers of Alabama among the state's most treasured natural resources, providing essential drinking water, recreation, transportation, wildlife habitats, and economic benefits to our communities. And whereas Alabama, whereas Alabama is home to over one hundred and thirty-two thousand miles of rivers and streams, making it one of the most biologically diverse states in the nation, supporting a vast array of aquatic life and ecosystems. And whereas the Alabama and Tallapoosa Rivers, which flow through Montgomery County, have historically served as lifelines for commerce, transportation, and recreation, and continue to support local industries, agriculture, and tourism. And whereas the Montgomery County Commission acknowledges the importance of protecting and preserving these waterways to ensure their health and sustainability for future generations. And now and therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim April eighth, 2025, as Rivers of Alabama Day in Montgomery County, and urges all residents to celebrate, appreciate, and contribute to the preservation of rivers and waterways. It's presented this first day of April, 2025, and it stands by the Chairman, the Vice Chair, and, uh, the Commissioners. So thank you all so much again for what you do, and we're looking forward to hosting, uh, the water rally, uh, next year. God bless you. All the best to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there picture time?
Yes.
Picture time.
We got it. We get the picture.
Yeah, come on up. Uh, we have, uh, comments from citizens. I think, uh, Ms. Sabo is already, and Willie Leonard, I believe they already spoke with us. Uh, Shannon Morell, Alabama Kidney Foundation.
Let's see, these are umbrellas. Um, it was fun getting these past security. They said, "What do you have there?" And I said, "Well, we work with the Alabama Kidney Foundation, and there's no more of a rainy day than today." And, uh, we wanna appreciate, tell y'all how much we appreciate you all for protecting us and protecting the citizens here in Montgomery County. We are incredibly grateful. I work here with Shannon, who is our regional director, and I work in the state office with, as part of our partnerships for community and corporate development. And I wanna tell you that we have no greater supporter in our government officials than the Montgomery County Commission. We cannot tell you what it means to us that our local lawmakers and, um, officials understand the need of those people in their community. So I wanna tell you a little bit about the Alabama Kidney Foundation. Y'all have supported us for a number of years. We are a state-based nonprofit. We are independent. That means that we are not supported by any national organization. We were started fifty years ago in nineteen seventy-five. I don't know that all y'all can remember nineteen seventy-five, but I can. And, um, we were started because there was a need among the citizens of Alabama. And Alabamian started it to help dialysis patients cover travel expenses and daily living needs to and from dialysis and to help their family. And we have stayed true to that core mission till this very day. And we are grateful that we have been able to sustain ourselves in that way. So since 2021, I'm sure that you all and everyone has noticed that there has been an increase in need among our citizens, and particularly among those citizens that are marginalized. And the Alabama Kidney Foundation has not only had to, we've been grateful to be able to fundraise to do it, we have increased our giving twenty-five percent to thirty percent. We are now paying, since this very last year, for things that we've never paid for before. We are helping people pay for their rent. That's something that we've never had to do. But now it's upon us, and it's a rainy day, and we need you to help us protect the people that are in this community. Um, I, I can tell you personal stories. I wish that you all would come out to our walk and let us honor you, uh, in front of the crowd and say how grateful we are. And you will hear the stories, if you haven't before, of the need that is out there. Um, the other thing that we are doing this year is we are increasing the amount of money that we give, uh, per person in our program, and we have expanded our program to go beyond that fourteen hundred dollars. We are really looking at individual cases, even beyond our emergency fund situation, because the need is great, and we depend on you all to help us meet that need.
I wanna, excuse me, I'm gonna cut y'all, but I wanna make sure our Commissioners have an opportunity to ask questions and...
Yes.
Um, and also if your friend wanted to say something real quick.
Well, um, Becky has pretty much said everything that, um, we've seen, even since I've joined AKF over six years ago, the need increase. Um, and I just wanna thank you all for really being the trailblazers for all the other commissions in the state and things that we can say to other commissions. Basically, you know, we show them the assistance dollars by county, and we're able to argue that point with numbers and stats from the year following, or the year prior. Um, so this year, you know, every, every summer, we get in front of these commissions and let them all know what we're doing to help the citizens that live in those counties, just like we do with Montgomery County and all the other counties surrounding us, even down in Becky's area, down in Mobile. Um, the need grows, the assistance dollars grows, and you can't argue with numbers. You can't argue with the fact that we're able to show neighboring counties like Lee County, Crenshaw County, Bullock County, Pike County. Pike County, you know, very small community, but they also recognize that, you know, we're giving their citizens money to survive and, and live, and like Becky said, daily living needs. So just wanted to thank you all, wanted to thank you, Commissioner Singleton. Um, I hate that Carmen, um, Commissioner Carmen Moore Ziegler is not here. Thank you both for contributing, you know, making a contribution, sorry, um, already to our walk. We have goals every year that we're trying to meet with six walks now across the state. So we just appreciate the support, and we hope that you'll continue that partnership with us.
Any questions?
What was your question?
We, thank you for recognizing that, but Commissioner, Vice Chair Ziegler and myself both made a contribution to community services for the Montgomery, uh, we're not sponsoring the walk. We, we can't do sponsorship, but we can do community service programs, and, and thank you for highlighting one of those for us today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
What was he asking?
I don't know. I think in the, the past, uh...
Last has been for ten thousand dollars for community services.
Eleven-five to fifteen thousand. When, when is the walk? I don't, I don't see that on any of this information.
The walk here for Montgomery, which actually is what we call the Middle Alabama, that's AKF's region, um, to really outline a portion of the state that those funds directly go for, um, or go towards immediately, with six walks across the state. Um, obviously, we have grown from the very beginning in nineteen seventy-five, where it started off with one, um, and now we've grown to six regional walks. And again, those walks are just reasons for people to get involved. Um, we have walk teams, we have sponsors, we have community partners. Montgomery, I'm, you know, I'm a little biased, but we have probably one of the better walks in the entire state when it comes to grassroots and how many teams get involved. Last year, we had fifty walk teams. Um, some of these people have loved ones that are suffering from kidney disease currently or have lost loved ones, so we just really have, um, a really good time with these people to help celebrate their past love, you know, the ones that they've loved and that have gone on and passed due to kidney disease. And they've known how much of a struggle it was for not just themselves, but their, their family. So Montgomery is May third. Um, it's at the Riverwalk Biscuit Stadium. We moved that to the stadium, um, right when COVID hit, and we were not able to use our venue that we'd used for years. Um, but it was, in my opinion, a very great thing for us, because we've definitely grown the attendance of the walk and the participation, and all of that coming together has really helped us, um, continue to raise more money for this area.
I just wanna say that as, I work statewide with every single region, and I will tell you that Shannon's right. This really is the best walk. Not only, uh, does she have a great advocacy and great community support, she also gets a lot of media present, and last year, for the very first time, Montgomery was the biggest fundraising walk of the state, bigger than any other group. And it was largely because of the advocacy that's been created here by Shannon. She's done an amazing job.
Well, thank y'all so much for coming.
Thank you. We hope that you support us.
Mr. Chairman.
I wanna add.
Yeah, okay.
Something. Kendall, I got two thousand dollars to, uh, AK, AKF, for my, uh, designated.
Designated.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The transportation, I know that can certainly be a challenge. Do you all have your own transportation network, or do you, how do you handle that?
Well, there is a network of, of other entities that provide transportation privately, through van services and things like that. As a state-based nonprofit, we can't sustain that kind of, um, what do you call it, when you have a lot of cars? Fleet. Thank y'all. Uh, we can't sustain the maintenance of that. What we do is we directly financially reimburse patients for those travel expenses. That is how we operate. So oftentimes, it's a family member that brings a patient, and we will, they will get a check from us every month.
Does it matter where I live at?
No.
No? Okay.
No. I mean, if you're enrolled in the transportation program, they calculate what your travel would be from, from where you are to the dialysis that you are going to, the clinic that you're going to. Most people don't realize, because there are so many dialysis clinics, and, uh, you know, I, I say there's probably ten to twelve in a mile radius from here, but that's not necessarily the dialysis center that you're gonna be enrolled in, because there's not available chair. So you may be enrolled in a dialysis center that is twenty miles away from where you are. So that's a great expense to people. In some areas of the state, a rural clinic may be closed, and then they have to go to the next county. We have enrolled everybody in those clinics in the transportation program as soon as we heard that that clinic was gonna close. Because we're state-based, we're not multi-level. Our response is very quick to assist people in need. I mean, uh, we have an overhead of seven percent for a nonprofit. That's incredible. Uh, we get the money, we give the money. It's that simple.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Two thousand from donated, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
If, if it's not too late to do it today, I know they just did, I'll do the same, two thousand from designated.
Where are we now? Do I hear five? Anybody in the audience wanna raise them?
Thank y'all, ladies.
Thank you.
Then everyone's invited to our walk on May third. We would love to have you all come.
And y'all let us know if you're coming. We would like to be able to honor you in front of the crowd, and thank you.
What, what time, what time that day?
Shannon?
Uh, sign-in will start at eight, and basically that's, you know, people walk, you know, walk up with donations that they've collected. Um, it's a fairly quick event. The mayor always comes and speaks and kinda starts off, um, our big day. It's really a celebration. That's why we kind of rebranded it so many years ago, because we are there, because we've all been working so hard since February to fundraise this money. So we added in celebration, because it really is, we're there to really just have a good time and appreciate, um, and show our appreciation for everybody that's helped us raise money. So we would love to have you all come. If you're not busy, it's, like I said, we're usually done by eleven. Um, and the Biscuit Stadium, the staff, and everyone with the city has just been an amazing support for us. We can't thank them enough and thank you all enough, so we'd love to see you there on May third. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay.
Thank y'all so much. I hope y'all join us.
All right.
Declare public hearing regarding alcohol license application for retail beer off-premise only and retail table wine off-premise to Applicant Yam, Inc., ADA Marathon, located at four ninety-three Old U.S. Highway three thirty-one, Raymer, Alabama, is now in session. Is there anybody here to comment on this? Declare meeting closed.
All right. Item number one, consider minutes of the regular meeting of March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval. If I can get mine. Can't move.
Everybody up?
Do I need to do anything?
Need to move.
Yeah, Dan's on that. Get that refresh button.
Where about?
Little refresh, the twisty button.
Okay. Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number three, consider alcohol license application for retail beer and retail table wine to Applicant Yam Incorporated for ADA Marathon, located on four ninety-three Old U.S. Highway three thirty-one, Raymer, Alabama.
Move approval.
Second.
Y'all up? I'm down. Okay. Hit the little re...
There you go.
Restart button. Refresh button. Motion carries.
Item number four, consider Montgomery County judge of probate salary legislation.
Move for approval.
I said.
Motion carries.
Item number five, consider change order for the phase-two renovations at the Montgomery County Detention Facility.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number six, excuse me, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies to include Optimus, Optimus Club, uh, one thousand dollars by Commissioner Harris.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue to include one thousand dollars to AUM Dixie Baseball, nine and ten-year-olds to the Red Sox, and, uh, two thousand dollars each to the Alabama Kidney Foundation from Commissioners Harris, Costanza, and Sankey.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider travel and training requests from the commission.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Those are all of our items, sir.
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
I don't have anything else.
So glad we have a deputy administrator now. Deputy Administrator.
No, sir, I don't have anything else at this time, but I am grateful again for the opportunity and look forward to working with each of you as we work to move Montgomery County forward.
Commissioner Harris, we're glad to have you back.
Hey, it's good to be back. Uh, again, congratulations, uh, Regina, on your elevation. And I'd like to thank everybody for your, your well wishes and your thoughts and, and your prayers. Uh, wasn't easy. Um, I fought out, had a bout with COVID. Uh, and this mask is more for my protection than it is for anybody else, as I think, I think I worked my way through the COVID part of it. Uh, but, uh, thank you all for your prayers, and it's really good to be back and breathing.
Amen.
Commissioner Costanza.
Welcome back, Dan. Um, I know, I know they're gone, but the Rivers of Alabama Day on, on Tuesday, I wanted to tell them, I, I won't be there, but I will be on a River of Alabama Tuesday, teaching fifth graders how to canoe up on Clear Creek, just north of Jasper, with our fifth graders. And so I thought that was a pretty fitting place to be if I can't, if I can't be there. So excited to go up to Camp McDowell with some fifth, or sixth graders, I said fifth, sixth graders next week. Um, so we'll be enjoying that. I wanted to say thanks to Mayor Stephen Reed for inviting me to attend, um, the Black Economic Mobility Summit in Montgomery, uh, last week. And, um, for folks who are in the room, we got to hear some incredible statistics, incredible information about what is, um, facing some of the equity in, uh, particularly the, the African-American community as it relates to business equality and economic mobility. And, uh, they, one of the, one of the most striking, um, statistics was, on the current path that we're on right now, if we did nothing to change, uh, the question was, how long would it take for there to be equity and parity, uh, in Montgomery County? So in specifically Montgomery County. And a lot of statistics about the state and the nation and certain urban areas, but for Montgomery County specifically, it would take, uh, just a, a small piece of time, seven hundred years to reach parity. Um, and if, that was an incredibly sobering statistic. And so as, as leaders, um, it's important for us to recognize that and to know that, and to know the part that we play, the role that we play, and how can we make decisions and be influenced by that information? I think that's our, our call to action. One of the, one of the, um, members of a panel during the day said that we don't, we don't need another entitlement program. We need an empowerment program, and I couldn't, couldn't agree more. I thought that was incredible. Um, but just lots of, uh, opportunities for state and local government to come together to do good work. And I know, I just wanna thank the city for kinda leading that charge right now. Um, and just wanted to share in this venue, the, the good work that was, was not only shared that day, but started that day, and I know that we'll get a chance to be a part of, and so I, um, I was, I was proud to be included that day, and, and hopefully we can all be part of the, uh, the, the path forward. So thank you to Mayor Reed and, and to the city. Um, last couple of weeks, I've been able to visit, uh, specifically two of the schools in my district, Morningview Elementary and Percy Julian, and, uh, continuing to, to meet with our education leaders. I ask every time, uh, what are the, what are the challenges you face? What are the funding needs that you have? What can we as a county commission do to support you? And, um, I got a new answer for the first time in Morningview. You know, everybody says the, the principal shared, you know, the kids, she's been there over twenty years. I said, "Well, what's, what's new?" I'm thinking, you know, everything is different. She said, "You know, there is absolutely nothing new with the children. Uh, everything is different with the adults, but nothing is new with the children. They still need to be loved. They still needed to be supported. They still need to learn in the same ways." And, um, and, and she shared, too, and, and I, and I share it because, you know, public education is a hot topic in the city right now and in this county. And, um, I appreciate the efforts. And I appreciate the efforts that the commission and that the chamber are leading in holding the standard as high as possible as we seek to find a new leader there. But the challenge wasn't just, because I hear it every time, was not just, hey, we can't keep kids in the classroom, truancy, absenteeism, but it was also that those same things exist in the adults in the school. It's harder than ever to find certified teachers. It's harder than ever to find teachers that want to work in a school. And so as they are replacing with non-certified teachers, they, they walk a fine line where you don't want to upset anybody, ask them to do too much or hold them too accountable because they're going to walk out. And they're not walking out on a job, they're walking out on 18 kindergarteners. And it's just a real sobering fact. And I feel like, you know, we in this room may not change that tomorrow, but we in this room need to know that that's happening today. And that's important. Really want to brag too on Percy Julian. You know, I don't think anybody in this room would sign up to go be a teacher in a math or science or English or history classroom at Percy Julian right now. And I hope I'm wrong, but we, we probably wouldn't elect to do that tomorrow. And what I, what I saw was a group of school leaders and teachers highly motivated to change the, change the narrative. They need a paradigm shift. They do. And they're, and they're starting that shift with relationships with their students. And I saw that play out, you know, specifically in front of me. And it was, it was impressive. It started with the leadership and it, and it bled down through the staff. So I just really want to brag on what they're doing. Those are, those are kind of my big things. One, one other quick shout out too. I've been participating in the Disability Advisory Group of Central Alabama. And it's a, it's only been around for about a year. And it's a group of people who have come together to try to build awareness, advocacy and support for our citizens with disabilities in Montgomery. And really what they're trying to do is they're trying to get people at the table who are already working in that realm, programs that already are being supportive of those, of those citizens. And so if a seat at the table is needed by you or somebody in your community, I'd, I'd be happy to share access to that, the Disability Advisory Group of Central Alabama. They've just launched a website. There's amazing stuff going on in Birmingham and they're, and they're starting to do some of the same things here in Montgomery. So shout out to them. Congrats to Judge Hardwick on his retirement and the investiture of Judge Samaria Dunson this past week was very, very impressive. It's a, it's a great day in Montgomery County. And finally, congrats to Regina Walker. We're so glad to have you in your position. That's all I got.
That's all?
Y'all gonna start paying me by the hour to talk.
Commissioner Sankey?
Commissioner Costanza, I really enjoy the comprehensive nature of your commentaries. I was just engrossed, I really was.
I can keep going if you need.
Really appreciate it. I would just want to take my time to ask about an update on the county personnel board. I know we submitted some names to be considered for, for the personnel board. And I would just, if, if, Mr. Chairman, if we could get just a brief update.
Well, we, I have two names submitted. I just need a third. So if y'all send me another name, we can vote on it next meeting and get it set up. And if everybody's good with the three names submitted, I'll, if I get a third name, I'll recycle every name and every resume that and send it to the entire commission. It can be voted on as early as next meeting. And honestly, the sooner the better. We do need to go ahead and get that set up because we need to get that board ready for anything that may come our way as it relates to appeals and grievances.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you had liberty to share with the names submitted to you yet or you want to hold off?
Well, I'll just hold off. I'd rather throw out a full slate.
Okay. That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, thank you, sir. Thank you.
You know, day's April Fool's Day and next meeting will be on tax day. Kind of ironic to have both. Friday, looking forward to the Child Abuse Prevention Month event at the Montgomery County Youth Facility, 11:30. I know some of the commissioners will be there along with myself for that day. I believe Justin touched on the, or Isaiah did on the Rivers of Alabama Day Celebration on the Alabama River on April the 8th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Red Bluff Bar. Trinum's having their State Foundation Scholarship Gala at Rivella on April 11th. I understand there's tickets still available. It's a very nice event. Helps Trinum State Foundation. On Saturday, there's a lot going on in Montgomery on Saturday. The biscuits will be playing. I think they open the season on Friday. Saturday, Ether Seal has their autism, if you like mudbugs, if you might like mudbugs, crawfish. They'll have all you can eat there along with the boil. It's a great cause if you're interested in that on Saturday. I think it's 3:00 to 6:00 at Riverwalk Stadium. Just one last thing. You know, we had a weather kind of situation yesterday and one of the hardest things for the commission to do is decide on days that we let employees come in late or go home early. It's just a tough, tough decision. I want to thank Kendall and Regina for being on top of that. And then I want to thank my commissioners. I sent an email out asking for their advice and everybody responded within minutes. When we have a weather potential day or something, I really rely on EMA as my expert. I check all the weather. And we're always going to err on the side of caution, but we can't let people off or let them go home every time we have a threat. Fortunately, in the past couple of years, we've had some serious threats that didn't materialize. And that's, that's the best case. We'd rather be very, again, err on the side of caution. But I want employees to know that we are looking out for it. We're going to do what we think is in the best interest, but we do have a job to serve our community. And just like private business has jobs. So we're going to err on the side of caution, but we're going to try to make a very, very informed decision as we have in the past and make sure everybody's safe, but also make sure that we're doing our jobs and serving our community like we should. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.